That's weird is you got red pines and poples that are six inch round that are twenty feet tall and broke off. I mean, you're just.
Everywhere, everywhere.
You know, it's gonna hurt the industry for years down the road because all those trees are twenty years old.
They're gonna die.
They can only salvage so much of it.
I was shocked by how bad it was. Very sad they just got over the hurricane or that tornado. Move to move forward from that rebuild. You wanna lead us in the pledge here in a few seconds? Yeah, five thirty. Thanks, Randy. Mark Server. Greg Scott. Charles Wiltie. Roger Mahew. Jenny David. Yes, here. Any additions or corrections, commissioners? Um, public comment, public comment and agenda item only. Any public comments around? Any public comment on the phone? Item four, twenty twenty-five county equalization report. Randy, you got the floor.
I do, and I've given you a copy of the L forty twenty-four. Had some difficulty balancing with a couple of the townships, and so I don't have a full equalization report ready for you tonight. Uh, I couldn't give it to Tim in time to do the uh, the uh, resolution that you need to adopt for your meeting tonight. So what I'd like to ask is that uh, this is uh, the resolution's table till our next meeting. Everything is balanced today. I met with the assessor net, but I'd like to go through and verify all the numbers before I submit it to you for final approval. Make sure.
Why, why, why'd you have trouble?
There was some special act parcels that they had trouble balancing and go back in and I caught one. When I was reviewing everything Monday in the state website, we were off four thousand dollars from the county in the state. And so I phoned here with the assessor. We worked on it. He got it fixed today and uh, but it's just kind of an odd thing and we balanced before. There's different ways we can run the reports out of BSNA. So in one way it runs it with special act parcels or you run it without the state only runs it without. It picked that. They didn't have it as special act parcel in their assessment role. And so we ended up balanced because a report was running correctly when we balanced originally. And so it's not, the overall value is the same. It's just, it's different on the reporting forms and we have to make sure that they're correct.
Things increased quite.
Yes, yes. In a letter, the, the overall values, the county went up about eight point nine four percent. Uh, taxable value went at five point three six percent. So pretty good increase and uh, like I said, I'll have more of that information last time. It's the number of sales in residential class were down, so there wasn't as much on cappings. But the values of sales are still really strong. I mean, they're still selling stuff really high.
Questions for Andy? Commissioner Scott?
No, I don't. You're not gonna be out of uh, compliance waiting another week, are you?
No, a lot of the counties don't even equalize on the day that they're supposed to. They just do it whenever they have a regular meeting. But as long as we uh, pass the resolution before May first and submit it to the state, we're fine.
Commissioner Wiltie? Commissioner Sugar? Anything else ready? That was it?
That's it.
Well, that was quick and easy. Thank you, sir. I don't think Jack Morris isn't here yet. Correct? Is he coming?
Um, neither Jack or Eric will be here, but I see this to you. Move right to five B. It's Mr. DeBoris here.
Oh, come on up. Mark? You're from the Veterans Affairs Committee.
Yeah, I'm a little while standing commissioner to the end of the month and uh, I also presid the alliance until the end of the month.
Well, nice to meet you. Have a seat, please.
The Ogumah County Veterans Memorial was built, dedicated in nineteen ninety-one, ninety-two. Uh, timeframe, which is on the plaque across the road north of the county building here. Uh, Archie Medina, the director of Veterans Affairs, told me on phone that the uh, committee for the uh, veteran memorial intended to have the trees never dwarf the memorial. Uh, periodically they would need to be cut down and replaced with smaller ones. Uh, the blue spruce and the other pine tree have grown significantly. And the Ogumah County Veteran Commission and the Ogumah County Veterans Alliance would like to obtain preliminary permission from the county commission to have the two trees cut down with two smaller trees planted in their place. The county owns the land the trees are planted on. The VA Commission and the Veterans Alliance, with your permission, will replace, to make plans to uh, raise the funds and solicit funding and volunteers to get the job done. Respectfully, I'm asking permission uh, preliminary to have the trees cut down to replace what plans are being made.
I think it's a great idea because you, as Archie said, I've known ours. Those should not be taller than the memorial itself. They should always be, you know, five, six feet, you know, five at the most probably. So, you know, six are huge and I've been out there when there's been winds like this, then yeah, they need to come down.
Commissioner Zerwick. Or Commissioners, sorry, Scott.
That's okay. No, the, the veterans have always taken care of that memorial and, and never let it decline. So of course I'll go with any recommendation they come up with.
Commissioner Wiltie. There you go, sir. Anything you need, anything they need from us, Tim?
Um, I'll put together a resolution for next week and we can make it all formal.
And you're, you're retiring soon?
Uh, from Veterans Affairs Commission, I had about seventeen, well, probably more than that. I don't know how long I've been on the commission. It seems like forever. I've been president for about seventeen years of the Veterans Alliance.
Well, thank you.
But uh, I've enjoyed working with veterans and uh, still be while I'm here helping out with uh, funerals and stuff like that. It's just I wanted to take some vacation time and so I kinda gotta be around every month at least to make sure things are going smoothly, so. And I might take some cruises.
Well, good for you. Enjoy, enjoy yourself. Well, thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Bethany? I'm assuming that's, come on up. Senior Manager, Maynard Custodian Related to Internal Controls Report.
Yes.
Hi.
Would anyone like a paper copy?
Please.
Anybody else? A wrought one for each of you. There is no shame in admitting you still like paper reports.
I got it on, I have it on my iPad. How that's fine with me.
I'm of the generation I'm supposed to like everything electronic. Don't ever look at my desk at the number of reports that are on there. Um, so I am Bethany Verbal from Maynard. Um, so I am here this evening to go over the control and efficiency assessment that we did. We did go over this with Tim and with all the other department heads, uh, had a couple of changes just to make sure everything's accurate in there. So I am gonna pretty high level go over the recommendations. If you have questions as they come up or that you already know that you have, interrupt me. This is meant to be very conversational. So I'll kinda just get started from there. So the first page that um, is not the cover page, is pretty much just the background. What, what did we do? Why are we here? We also include the fraud triangle. I always like to clarify that that's not because I walked out of here and said, oh my gosh, we have problems. It's because we want people to understand that, yes, we are going to look for efficiencies. We're looking to streamline processes. But we're not gonna just throw internal controls outside and say we don't need these anymore. Uh, so this is really just a good reminder for everyone. So what you'll see then on uh, numbered page three is this kind of matrix. So the intention of this is to help us prioritize. We have a lot of recommendations in here. And the goal is not tomorrow, we implement every single one of these because all that's gonna do is cause chaos and then the department heads are not gonna be big fans of me. Um, so this is really to help us focus. So anything that is towards the upper right hand, that is where we're gonna see the greatest impact. Anything that's towards the left, toward the bottom, it's still a good idea. We still wanna think about implementing it, but it's not something that we wanna think about tomorrow. So page four starts the internal control recommendations. So strengthening our controls. The first one where we will see really the, the largest impact is departmental financial procedures. For the most part, what we have in here is what the departments are doing with some tweaks, again, to kind of strengthen internal controls. But now we have formalized documentation of what everyone should be doing for each of the financial processes for, for all of our major departments. So that if someone wins the lottery tomorrow, the next person that comes in isn't looking around going, where do I even start? Um, I can't help with the equalization or register of deeds, but I can help with the financial side of things. So then the next few all relate to cybersecurity, system access. Making sure that we have a policy specifically on how to request access. And what you'll notice, and it, it is easier in the PDF, is that any policies that we recommend, we have in the appendices. So if you are wondering what this system access policy looks like, if you click on the appendix B, section one, it'll take you there. Or if you flip to page forty-one, you can also see the, the policy that we're recommending there. We do wanna make sure that we're uh, doing some annual cybersecurity training. Municipalities have seen some increased targeting because we do have a lot of pretty sensitive information about our residents. So annual training is always, always a good idea. And then looking at the number of different systems that we have, we have lots of different systems. We have, what I'm positive is not a comprehensive list at the beginning of recommendation D. And we might need all of those, or we might not. We might be able to integrate some of those systems. So instead of having ten, we have seven. It's gonna be cheaper. We're not paying for all of them then. And we're not trying to pull information from all these systems and reconciling them. Because ultimately, if we have anything financial that is living outside of our general ledger, outside of BSNA, we really should be reconciling that system to make sure that the information is accurate. E, fund balance policy, again, that's in appendix B. You guys do have a financial reserves policy, but it doesn't necessarily break down the different types of fund balance. You guys have done a lot of really hard work, um, so that we are in a much more positive place with our fund balance. So we do definitely wanna make sure that we have a policy on, on how to use those resources. Page five, federal policies and procedures. We have elements of these throughout other policies at the county. But anytime we accept federal funds, even if we don't have to have one of those single audits where the auditors come in and test a whole bunch of extra stuff. And I can say mean things about auditors because I was an auditor for the first like seven years of my career. So, um, so with the federal policies and procedures, we definitely wanna make sure that we have those um, implemented in their entirety so that we're following all of the requirements there. Rent management um, is G. We have lots and lots of different types of grants. So we do wanna have a way of really getting a good understanding of what all grants we have. Local, state, federal. So not only having a policy on how we will or won't accept those, but also some additional functionality already built into our accounting software that we can track those and have some better reporting for department heads and all of you. Similar uh, H, having a donation acceptance policy. Making sure that, you know, we are cognizant of where the funds are coming from. Donations are fantastic, um, but right, wrong, or indifferent. The minute something has our, our county associated with it, people assume that, that we're running it. And that may or may not be the case, but that's the perception. So this is really to help address some of the potential issues that could arise from that.
So that's, excuse me. So what we're, we're trying to do is make sure how we, how we take the donations in. And is there, is there levels at which reporting levels or anything like that?
So what?
That explained further in?
Yes, so what we talk about here, um, so if there are specific departments or events where they are asking for donations. So potentially Veterans Affairs is, you know, doing some sort of fundraiser. And they are looking for donations. We wanna make sure that when we are requesting those donations, it's coming from the right place. So it's not this person and that person, and then all of a sudden we accidentally find out that this person who has nothing to do with the county is soliciting donations. So kind of locking down where those requests are coming from and making sure that they're recorded clearly so that we, department heads, board members can see where all of that is recorded. Uh, because you all do have a policy that says the, the Board of Commissioners has to approve all donations. So this is kind of to help support that effort. So looking at disbursements, um, just some additional ways that we can strengthen some internal controls there. That's in I. And then J is talking about an ACH EFT policy. Before we issue any sort of electronic payments, we should have one of those policies in place. Um, so that is in our appendix. Looking at some additional ways to, again, controls, um, surrounding expense reimbursements and credit cards. Same thing with vendor onboarding, again, just strengthening our internal controls. Um, that's over L and M. And then on page seven, sorry. Uh, receipt recommendations. So we do wanna have a, a delinquent tax revolving fund policy. You guys do a great job with it. Karen and her team do a fantastic job, but formalizing that, so it's really clear who is responsible for what, how the administration of those funds happens. Um, so it's, it's clear to everyone who, who holds what role. Um, and then again, O is just some additional controls over invoicing. Um, individual departments sometimes do invoicing for things that they do, so making sure we have good controls over that. And then we do have a couple of recommendations surrounding transit, um, as well as uh, parks and recreation. They have uh, separate systems that don't necessarily reconcile back to our general ledger, which just makes it hard from an accounting standpoint and from a control standpoint to really feel like we have our arms around that activity. So I know I went quick because we could be here all night if I had my choice. The rest of the pages in here, so starting on page nine, that's where it breaks down by department. Um, the financial procedures that we're seeing in there. Some departments might have, you know, more detailed with, you know, screenshots, true standard operating procedures. But these are the financial procedures that every department either was or is now moving towards following. And then appendix B starts on page forty. That's where we have any of the recommended policies that I mentioned. Those have all been updated, um, and customized with, you know, thresholds or procedures that we would recommend for the county. Obviously, that is something that, you know, Tim will take a look at. You all will have to, to vote to approve. Um, but that is what is in those. And then appendix, so many appendices. Um, appendix C, which starts on page sixty-two. This is just a visual workflow of all of the different main financial processes. So if you wanna know, well, how do people get paid? Or how do checks make it from we got the invoice to this is how they got sent to the vendor? All of that is included in, in these workflows. And the workflows incorporate recommendations that we had. So if there's something where you're like, I don't think that's really how we do it. It might not be, but if we are implementing some of these recommendations, this is what that workflow is going to look like. So we can get an understanding of what that would look like. And once we have things implemented, again, it's big picture. The next person comes in, they can see, okay, this is how transactions go from, from start to finish. And some people are just more visual. They don't wanna read, you know, the ten pages of financial process narrative that I typed up. So broad overview of a seventy-some page document. Questions, comments, Commissioner Scott?
I looked it over before coming and different, different areas of it. Um, I sat on Parks and Rec Board, which has some of the issues. And then also I sat on law enforcement committee that has some different issues in here. Parks and Rec, uh, not just cash handling, which we're getting narrowed down to, but we also have two, um, private five oh one C threes that feed, feed it so that when that happens, it's fundraising and that isn't really a county issue, is it? Rather than the, when the transfers from that and indeed to the county?
So if we are looking at it strictly from an accounting perspective, you are correct. What's happening in a separate five oh one C three is technically separate from the county. Where I have seen organizations run into issues is that do all of our residents know that they are completely separate five oh one C threes? Or when they see Parks and Rec, or when they see this park, do they immediately associate it with the county? So you are absolutely right. Technically, they are separate. But I do see issues with that, um, when there's some of that.
What I think happens, and this is what we've seen at the Sheriff's Department, is they get a donation from somebody and they write it right out to the Sheriff's Department. They don't write it out to the, to the posse, which we're trying to get a five one C three made there. So that they can. At Parks and Rec level, we've told people, write the check to friends of the Deer Park, you know? Uh, friends of the high banks, you know, so that, that it's separate. Um, so, you know, we, we do that. We have one of those, what do you call it? The do-dad thing that you, you read it with your phone. QR code, there you go. Yeah. Uh, QR do-dad. Um, so that goes right to the friends. So, um, but we've seen like uh, different social uh, uh, organizations write checks out and they'll write them out to Sheriff's Department. And then of course, that check needs to come through the Treasurer's Department at that time because they're the only ones that can cash it. Right? The Sheriff's Department can't take it to the bank and cash it. Yeah, so, okay, um. No, I've, I've been kind of following through, Tim, following a lot of your um, progress on this whole system. And I understand that when we first started, we had forty-two ways of taking cash and forty-two ways of handling it. And uh, which had to be just amazed. So, um.
Well, and I, I should have said that, but I do wanna say too, so I was out here when Maynard first started working with the county in twenty-one.
Something like that.
I have come into a very different environment this time. You guys have done, department heads have done so much work. Um, this is, this is, again, ways that we can strengthen things, but you guys have made a lot of progress already. So I do wanna make sure that I acknowledge the department heads like that has not been an easy, an easy journey.
Commissioner Wiltie?
Uh, it's a lot of important stuff in here. I liked how you explained that if somebody went a lot of how we would, that's why this is so beneficial. So, um, I spent hour and a half and I spent some more time looking at it, but a lot of stuff here, but thank you.
Yes. Commissioner Zerwick?
I spent, no, hour and a half, but I spent quite a bit of time looking this over and I still wanna get in depth into it, but and I really appreciate what you've done and I appreciate that you've uh, given kudos to them for getting from where they were five years ago to where they are today. So. Again, it's a continuing process. We just chip away at it and I, I think, and I, you know, we kind of said that we'd make great strides from where we were five years ago, so. It's great.
Commissioner May. Karen, do you have anything? Treasure, you wanna add to this?
Um, I want to say that it's been a pleasure working with Bethany. She brought some great energy to the project and I thought she was very thorough in the work that she did. So, kudos to you as well.
Thank you. Coach, do you have anything to add? Perfect. Thank you, Tim. Do you have anything?
I'll just that you've got a recipe for many agendas in there.
You're welcome. I'm sorry.
Keeping us updated as these recommendations, um, are implemented. Uh, you know, that's what I think we would appreciate as a board from an administrator is knowing what's, what's happening with these recommendations. So, thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Item five D, Dan Elliott, Debold Insurance Agency, insurance review. Come on up, sir. Thanks for coming.
Thanks for having me. As long as Dan's up here, he takes care of F as well. He's got a renewal of our cyber liability policy.
Okay.
Interesting turn of events on that, so let Dan's talk about it.
But they're gonna go hand in hand?
You can take them together.
You bypass me.
Did I? Right here.
Oh, jeez, hello. Thank you, sir.
I didn't want to drop it on your keyboard there. So, everybody has a packet. I'm Dan Elliott from Debold Insurance. I know I haven't met a lot of you. I know some of you. I feel like I knew all of you because I watch all of these on a weekly basis on Zoom to see what's going on. Um, this kinda started after the renewal last year. I reached out to Tim and said, I think it would be a good exercise to go through the coverages with the board to explain what it is we have in place. I'm not gonna, the policy itself is four hundred and some pages. We're not gonna go through all of that, but some of the highlights are important. It's a big budgetary item for the county and there's a lot of different moving parts and it's important that the board, in my opinion, understands what it is that we're paying for. So, um, really this is the main proposal. Uh, there's been some subtle changes since it was issued, but it's close enough to get a good concept of what everything is. So, the commercial package tab, we'll kinda go through in tab order. If you go to the, you'll see on the bottom right, it says page three. This is gonna outline, um, what all the coverages are on the commercial package. Travelers are the carrier. They've been the carrier since two thousand nineteen that writes the commercial package. There are a lot of coverages thrown within this package. Uh, the top is the commercial property or is this commercial package program? You'll see insurance company, traveler's property. There's the general liability. We'll talk about what each of these coverages are in the, in the tabs that move forward. Uh, employee benefits liability, the law enforcement liability, public entity management liability. On the next page, we're gonna have employment related practices liability, auto liability, auto physical damage and umbrella. So, a lot of coverages exist within this package, so we'll kinda dive through each one. Feel free to stop me anytime if you have specific questions. Um, so let's start with the property tab. If you flip that, you can see it says building and business personal robbery. These are what we put on a blanket. So we basically take every address that the county has, the list that we send to Tim. He goes through it, looks at building values, looks at contents values. We have a total insurable value of twenty-seven million nine hundred and sixteen thousand six hundred dollars. So it's a pretty big wide property schedule when you look at the entire county portfolio. We put them on a blanket for a couple of reasons. The nice thing about a blanket is it protects against underinsurance a little bit in a construction inflationary environment. So do you say this, this building in the jail, right? This, this building burns down on the list that's insured for five million to replace it ends up being seven million. Well, we get to go to the whole pool of twenty-seven million. So it protects against the underinsurance of a building a bit. The other big advantage of it is storm comes through, it's multiple buildings. It's just one deductible. So we don't have a per building deductible, which is a nice feature to have. Any questions on that at all? Okay. Next tab, it's gonna be the general liability tab. General liability is basically bodily injury and property damage that happens on the premise. There also is a little bit of uh, abuse and molestation coverage thrown into the municipality program. There also is a little bit of, uh, abuse and molestation coverage thrown into the municipality program. But basically this is bodily injury of people, property damage to people's property that occur because of county operations. Million dollars per occurrence, three million dollars aggregate means you could have on any claim up to a million dollars, no more than three of those in a policy period. Next is gonna be the employee benefits liability. You'll see the premium there relatively inexpensive coverage. Uh, million dollars per occurrence, three million dollar aggregate. This is gonna be if there's any, uh, wrongful acts with the administering of employee benefits. Your employee comes on, we forget to offer him life insurance. They end up passing away. Spouse comes to us and says, well, why didn't we offer them the life insurance contract? So it all has to do with the administering of the employee benefits, both on life insurance, health insurance, retirement planning, whatever, whatever other benefits are in that portfolio. Law enforcement liability, I believe is my next one. One of the biggest spends, uh, wrongful acts related to lawsuits with the, the, the law enforcement. Um, pretty big exposure for the county with the Sheriff's Department. Um, fifteen thousand dollar deductible. A lot of these have deductibles tied to them in the liability space. Uh, the premium did come down a little bit in this category last year because it does pick up jail personnel as rated employees as part of the department. That's just how they, they rate, um, the law enforcement liability included the jail. So we went through and updated it. It did bring that premium down a little bit. Um, but it's a pretty big exposure for the county with what the, the officers are doing on the road every day. Questions on that? Public entity management liability. This is gonna be the coverage that we have in place for you, the board. Okay. This is protection for you individually. Somebody sues you for a wrongful act or a decision that you made at the board level. So good to have in place. Million dollars per occurrence. You'll see a lot of these. There's a retroactive date on there. I mean, this is covering any claim back to ten one of nineteen ninety-four. So, um, it, it's nice to have that. Uh, very rarely do we see claims brought that late and a lot of times there's statute of limitations related to what it might be. Um, but it is covering full prior acts back to nineteen ninety-four. Next tab, employment practices liability. Um, in today's world, we've seen an uptick in claims. Uh, this is your claims wrongful termination, discrimination, sexual harassment. Um, doesn't cover just settlement, but also has defense coverage tied in with it. Um, important coverage in today's world.
Did this last one have defense coverage in it?
It does. And so below, there's, there's two different, you'll see. It talks about injunctive relief, which is gonna be a coverage where there's no monetary lawsuit. Somebody sues you for a pain and suffering or mental anguish. There are some defense limits set there. However, if they sue you for a financial decision that you made at the county, okay? There's no sub limit at all for defense. It's unlimited up to the policy limits on the policy.
Well, would that be the, would that be the policy before that?
That would be under the, the public entity management liability. So a million dollars per occurrence. If they sue you for a decision you made.
Right, right.
That financially impacts the county.
Okay.
Okay.
But we went over to public and the employment.
Correct.
Right. Now that's something that we sue to an employee.
Correct. Yep. Employee gets discriminated or I didn't get hired because of this. I was harassed in the workplace. That's your coverage for that at the employee level.
And we've had exposures at that level.
Correct.
In the last.
It's an important coverage.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
How much is covered under the def- defenses? Is that the twenty? For that, for the employment related practices liability?
There is no, there's no limit on the defense coverage.
There's not? Okay.
No, that is just the deductible, a twenty-five thousand.
Okay, okay.
Oh.
So a lot of them have higher deductibles.
Five percent, five thousand, it's twenty-five.
Five thousand on the property. Some of the higher liability coverages in the municipality space, public entity world carry higher deductibles.
Right.
You get lower, but then you're paying for it in premiums. So it's trying to find that combination of price and coverage.
But when it comes to personnel and a claim is made against us, twenty-five thousand.
To the county. Correct. But what you see is those claims have become significant in a dollar figure. So as much as the first dollar cost.
Right. Absolutely. I remember a couple.
Yeah.
Why I'm saying.
I know you do.
Keep going.
Business autos, the next coverage, uh, it's, it's broken down into two areas. You've got, um, liability, which is the first section. That's obviously injuries, few people with vehicles on the road. The next section is physical damage coverage, which is just on page twenty-six and then on page twenty-seven. We get a list every year. It's a composite rated policy, which means at the end of the year, they do an audit. We send it over to Tim on the correct number of vehicles through the year, a million dollars for auto liability. On the next page, physical damage, twenty-five hundred dollar comprehensive, five thousand dollar collision deductibles.
This covers all of our county.
The entire fleet, law enforcement, the transit. Twenty-five hundred dollar comprehensive, five thousand dollar collision.
So hit it, hit a deer twenty-five hundred?
Correct.
Hit, hit a cell phone, pull five grand. Hit another car, five grand.
Correct.
We just learned that last week.
I wouldn't hear of it. Last week, did you talk about that? Oh, yeah, the minivan. Right, right. I think we need to know about more of them.
How much is that?
I think you're finding out more about them than we are.
Correct.
Thank you for letting me know that.
All I got for you. What was that question?
No, I didn't have one. How much is that? How much is that premium went up, I guess, from last year to this year? A hundred and four thousand?
I have to check on what it was last year.
It doesn't, it doesn't.
I think, I think it was pretty flat, but we'll have to check on.
It was pretty flat, but there was one jump because we added a bus.
Correct.
You know, one more bus than what we had to prior years. So that.
Oh, okay.
I can get you the actual comparison last year, this year.
One, because we've had quite a few accidents this past year. It seems like, uh, okay, go ahead.
Commercial umbrella. This is an added four million dollars that's going over all of your other liability coverages. So as an example, you'll see the limit of four million. Below it, you'll see all the underlying coverages that it goes over. As an example, you get a million dollar claim and the, what we think is a million dollar claim for law enforcement liability in that ends up being a two million dollar settlement. Law enforcement liability pays the first million, umbrella steps in and pays an additional up to four million for that. Same with the auto liability. Somebody runs a stop sign, injures people in a vehicle. Auto pays the first million, umbrella steps in and pays additional up to four million above that. So we have a total of a five million dollar tower of liability for most of these coverages.
Or be a million plus the four.
Plus the four, an additional four, correct.
Okay.
This is, uh, the cyber liabilities, the next tab. Uh, I think we have some things that I had sent over to, to Tim on this. This is actually, uh, last year's that renews on May fourteenth of this year. Policy, it's a million dollars cyber liability. Well, Bethany kind of talked about it a little bit when she was up here about the importance of cybersecurity and what we're seeing and it's not just municipality space, but a lot of our clients that we deal with. Last year, we had a thousand dollar deductible. And you have that price in front of you there? The, the carrier that we had, uh, last year didn't offer the thousand dollar deductible. So they came back with a ten thousand dollar deductible. We said, well, what else is out there? And we went to an additional carrier and found a carrier that will do with no deductible, which is actually eighteen hundred dollars less than you paid last year for the cyber liability.
Why?
Now that it's been placed for a couple of years and we're claim free, we're able to show that in the marketplace. That makes a big difference because this is a newer coverage that you've had portfolio the last couple of years.
Yeah.
Um, in, in, you know, when it was new business, it's underwriters are a little shy about it, but now we've got two years of no claims. It certainly helps.
We go through a test each year too, when this is renewed and, and a lot of questions for Tom about some of the protections that we have. Uh, what our firewalls are, you know, we do have two factor authentication. So when we remote in, yes, we do. He's able to complete all that in technical terms that I don't understand, but yeah, appears it goes in our favor.
And last year was eleven thousand one fifty-three. Do you have that number in front of you for this year, the one I emailed you?
Yep, ninety-two, ninety-four, oh five.
Did come down a little bit.
Yeah. And you dropped your deductible from a thousand to zero. So it's kind of a no brainer in my opinion.
Thanks for following me there.
Tom, do you have anything you want to add to this?
I'm glad you asked because I, I, what, what was the coverage limits last year? Cause it seems to me, and I could be wrong, I thought it was two million dollars.
No, it was a million. I've got actually the policy right here in front of me.
Okay. Cause I looked up the invoices today and I saw the premium had gone down, but our invoice scan into B S and A did not disclose the coverage limits.
Yeah, policy agreed annual, a million dollars.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Questions on that commissioners? Is that we have several liability insurance policy renewal? Questions?
Um, a couple of months ago in Northern Michigan, Michigan Association, there was a guy from Grand Traverse County. I think it was the county administrator and they had gotten hacked. And they literally de-counted after dealing with, I mean, FBI, everything else. They actually wrote a check to some foreign entity to be able to get their information back, which is just wild to me. I think it was two hundred thousand plus. It was like the only option they had.
Hope care agencies.
I mean, obviously this is real and when you take it very.
Grand Traverse County and the city of Traverse City Sheriff Building. So their entire network was intertwined. It was all one. As a result of this, the city has opted now to do their own network independent of the county. We'll see if that's any better or not. I'm not sure that their exposure is any less, but that, that was a direct result of this, direct consequence.
Yeah, I mean, that's a great point. We see a lot of that. If you flip to page two of that cyber liability, you'll see right there, ensuring agreement two point O in the middle of the page. Extortion threat and ransom payments. Got a five hundred thousand dollar sub limit for extortion and ransom payments. I mean, it's one of the biggest cyber incidents that happen, right? Is your computer is locked up and you have no choice but to send the money. And we've seen it happen anywhere from a ten thousand dollar payment to a half a million dollar payment and it kind of sad that that's the world we're in, but it's the reality of what we're seeing in the market.
Commissioner Scott, anything?
No, I understand. This is a, this is something that comes along with all this internet and everything else. I mean, uh, I mean, two years ago, I almost lost fifty-four thousand dollars through, um, wire transfer that went the wrong way. And I got all but a couple of thousand out of it and I was thanking everybody I could on that one, but wow, I know, it's just unbelievable.
It is. It's getting more complex. It's getting more prevalent. It's an important coverage to have.
Is it an annual renewal, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Commissioner May, who anything? Commissioner Sibert?
No.
Okay, next.
That's positive. Yeah. That's a positive. At least there's a positive.
Go ahead.
Uh, the workers' conversation is the next piece that's renewed, uh, just renewed in January. This is what you I heard the meeting last week, talked about the audit a little bit. And, and that's been one of the issues that we've had historically on the work comp here is payroll wages had gone up and we were, we were chasing. At the end of every work comp policy, they look back at the prior year and audit where your true exposures were based on the class codes on the policy. Um, every year there had been a ten to fifteen thousand dollar audit premium. Well, this year at renewal, what we did, and I explained it to Tim in an email was we had them update all the payrolls to match last year's audit, but keep the premium the same. So it's gonna net out being about a fifteen thousand dollar savings for the county, but we're not gonna see it until next spring's audit. Does that make sense?
Hmm, yeah.
But that was the big thing is every year we're just chasing, not having enough payroll on the policies. You're gonna have the audit premiums. We went to accident fund and say, how about you updated to match last year, but we don't want to see any premium increase. So we'll realize that when the audit comes next spring. The last page is really fun to look at for everybody. Uh, that's the overall premium summary of all of those policies together. And that's why it's.
Ooh.
Yeah, that's exciting.
Yeah, exciting. And that's why it's important that we, we understand what everything is. And you know, it's always a combination of where are we lacking insurance? What's too much insurance? What's the right amount of insurance? Um, you know, I, I listened to Tim too, talk about, you know, do we have any gaps in the policies last, last meeting and, um, you know, I, we've reviewed it as a team and, and we think that it's, it's pretty well covered. I mean, it's hard for me to sit here and tell you to buy less liability limits. Um, the property rates are what they are with construction costs these days. Um, we're in a pretty litigious environment and this municipality, public entity space is a big target for that. Um, I don't see any big voids where I would say we should add additional coverage though either.
Comments, Commissioner Sibert?
I'm just curious. We shouldn't increase the umbrella coverage. I don't know. Looking at, as you said, what settlements can come out as, if we're capped at, you know, five million, there have been settlements come down the road that are a lot more than that. And I, and it doesn't look like the liability policy is all that expensive on its own.
On, on the umbrella, you're spending about five thousand dollars per million.
Right.
Is what it comes out to.
Interesting thing that happens when we do get involved in a suit, you'll often find, uh, there's a certain court process to do this where the individuals who are the plaintiffs, I guess, look, want a copy of the coverage.
Yeah.
Basing.
You, you have more limit, they want to sue for more limit.
They have access to that?
Uh, they can get it through discovery. I mean, I'm not the attorney, uh, that, that can answer it, but a lot of times through the process, they end up getting their hands on it. Um, but a lot of these claims.
Public information.
A lot of these claims will, will settle with the policy limit just because they realize that's the most that the entity can afford and that's how it works. Um, that being said, that just takes a police started, go through and all of a sudden you hit a school bus or something, right? Then we got a pretty big liability. We'll knock on one. I'm just talking about how this liability game works. Cause he brings up a great point is, you know, it ninety-nine point nine percent of claims will be covered within your policy limit. But there's always the chance that not enough, but you know, you still run that chances is, is ten enough, right? So, um, I'm also aware of the, the current financial situation in the county. It's hard to say, we'll spend another twenty thousand dollars on insurance. I, I understand that. Probably not a direction to go.
Right.
Commissioner Scott.
That, in that respect, the pockets only is so deep.
Right.
When it comes to here, I mean, we don't have, we're not gonna sell the county building off to pay off a debt, you know, and, and and a judge out there knows that. Now maybe GM has to sell a building or two if they got sued, but not a county entity, but I, 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 I know what happens with that. I, I insure everything I have and I ensure, uh, every, everything I do, I insure to the old. Um, because I'd rather pay now than later. Yeah, I know it's a lot of money, uh, that what he said here, but you know, commercial automobile is the highest right here. We already know that. We, we put out for bids before and give receive letters that said they don't even want to bid it because of our commercial liability. Um, or our automobile liability, I should say. I think, um, just as we just talked about postman about limitations and, 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 and keeping regulations. I guess I, I, I gotta reach out to you guys again. I think we do this about every time. You guys got programs out there. You guys got programs out there for, for us. Uh, I guess I'm reaching out for you. But, but not wait for us to ask you. Would you just put it on your tickler file to?
I will.
To call us and say, you, you got a driver's training program, you got a, you got a, a, a safety program. That we could institute. Anything like that, not only. To minimize at our end of it. But if there's some kind of credits we can build with you guys to knock down the cost. You understand this just as much as me. Part of that four hundred and twelve thousand dollars is your tax money that you're paying us. You know, and I just soon use that for something else other than that.
Now, you know, I, I would say that. We have some stuff to Paul, but I, I think a good exercise to consider. Is it's been a few years since we've done it, but, but have travelers come back through here with their full risk control team. And meet with the department ads and, and give some advice from a risk management perspective of. This is what we're seeing. I mean, it's a free, free of cost thing to do. You know, these are areas that could benefit, reducing the liability exposure for the county. Um, you know, we like to sit down in those meetings too, but it's a, it's a great resource and you're talking about one of the biggest insurance companies in the world. Uh, to be able to come in and provide that at no cost is something that I think is worth considering.
I've, I've only been a commissioner for two years. How many years have you guys been serving the home county?
We have insured at least part of the county since nineteen ninety-seven. Um, we have had the majority of this package business since about two thousand and three. But to your point, uh, it's a difficult market to want to ensure it. Uh, one of the. One of the big problems, and we went through the exercise before, hey, where can we save on auto? Can we separate out the transit? Can we separate out the law enforcement vehicles? Can we put them separately? Nobody wants to ensure vehicles that are transporting people and nobody wants to ensure. Police vehicles on the road, so it's just how can we pull it together and drive down the cost the best we can, but. Yeah, we, we've been doing business since nineteen ninety-seven and. The majority of the package business since oh four.
Commissioner Sorbock.
Other than. My umbrella statement.
Do you guys ensure any other counties?
We do a lot of townships. Um, I would say the biggest one, we ensure Grand Lake Township. Um, but then a lot of local townships around here as well.
And that total does look like a lot, but, but overall, how much does that increase from last year to this year? This four twelve?
I, I had to figure out what those numbers were from that last.
Didn't excite me when I saw it, you know, I do expect some increase, but it wasn't double digits by any means.
Everything went up. Next question I have, obviously, is just a rough estimate, just so the general public has an idea, um, cause we see stuff come through. Um, rough estimate of how many claims this past year.
In this back of your folder, I have your full claims report. I will say. Do you want me to read off claim dollars?
Um, I mean, I think it's good for us to know. Absolutely. Where are you at?
Uh, the bottom of page six. Yeah, I wanted to provide it all for some context. This is just on the, the traveler's portion of the package. So we're talking, take out the work comp section and take out the cyber section. This, so of that four twelve. You're talking less ninety grand, you're talking about three hundred and twenty thousand a premium that's related to these claims, okay?
Were you at page six?
Yeah, but I was giving you a little context from your premium summary. Of four hundred and twelve thousand. That, that doesn't include the work comp, it doesn't include the cyber, what these claims are for. There have been twenty-three claims with a total incurred loss of eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars. Just on that, on that package.
Let's see where you're looking at. That's this past year, correct?
No, that's, that's since two thousand and nineteen. So that's going back on a five-year look.
Twenty twenty, it says two twenty, February twenty seventh, twenty twenties.
You're right, correct. Correct.
Yeah, five years.
Five years.
That's what you've paid out for us, eight hundred and sixty-eight.
Either paid out or reserved that they're anticipating to pay out, cause some of these, some of these claims are still in litigation, which we don't need to go through. Specific claims in this, in this setting. Um, that's what the anticipated payout is going to be between either settlement and or defense costs along the way.
Oh, and then you have paid. What's OS? What's the, what am I missing?
So what, how that is, is if you look at it. They're paid five ninety-two. Incurred eight sixty-eight. With the total. Uh, payable potential of another two seventy-five.
So that's payable potential, so I'm looking at there, okay. Well, thank you for giving us this.
Not a problem. Any other additional questions?
Any questions, commissioners? I appreciate this information.
Absolutely. Anytime you would like us to come in, I mean, situations, conversations about risk management, we're happy to be here. About that part of a drive for us. We'll move forward with the cyber policy.
Thank you, sir.
Glad we don't have to put cement blocks in front of our building, you know?
Jack Morris Construction, welcome guys, come on up. Last but not least. You're good. Was it empty over there?
We got a couple sketches. The architect is still working on his final drawings.
Thank you.
Yep, that's what's outside, yes.
Just different colors.
Yeah, just different colors you guys can pick. This is what we proposed.
Yeah, basically you guys, you know, just looking for some appearance looks at it, stuff like that. Moving forward, so I. I guess we did what we, we could here, uh. Apologize that we don't have a full set of plans as of yet, but they are drawing them, so I requested him to at least get us this far so you guys can see something. And of course, I remember your color samples. But there's a lot more colors than that. I just think that, that kind of keep it somewhat easy then with some complementary colors. I don't think you guys need to. Bright greens and blues and stuff like that, so. Some are the windows, uh, so that'd be your, um, window frame color on that keychain right here.
I moved in my house nineteen years ago. In my bedroom, a light green, and when I turn off the lights, it's brighter. I think it's year raining.
I, I guess employees have to look at this every day, work with this. I mean, is there a way that they actually could make these decisions through a survey or?
If you delegate it, yes.
Are you guys okay with that? I, I think.
Tim sent us an email requesting.
But I mean, if they could actually look at these pieces, I, I don't care. I mean.
Can you leave those?
Oh, absolutely. There you, you know, so.
Uh, set them up maybe in here, maybe the office across from me and just people can come in and look as the.
We're hoping to get a bigger swatch of that, you know what I mean? Unfortunately, that's what they supplied to us for the swatch, you know? So the windows are comparable in the width size to what you guys had originally spec, other than of course the. Altering grades that we're making to, to frame in, there's stuff like that. So you lost about five inches. Per window width wise, and then we were going to shorten them up a little bit, basically, basically. Sixties are with fifty-four. Opening sixty-four inches. Probably might be more like fifty-eight by fifty-four, just so your trim boards can go on the side of that. There's a few spots that we don't, of course, we're waiting on the architect to design the big glazing areas that are on the front entryway. You know, I mean, that, that stuff, I'd like to get back in front of you guys again, you know, we're not going to start tomorrow by any means. I'd like you guys to approve what that looks like. Um, as you see out front there, there's some options of the lap siding. And then the board and batten, um. On something that big, maybe we can incorporate both. Uh, to, to help the appearance, you know, of it, as opposed to just doing one, you know, lap siding all the way across it or anything like that. So. But, uh, colors would probably be your biggest, you know. Thing as far as that goes.
Commissioner Wiltsey.
What was the size of the, again?
Fifty-eight by fifty-four. Fifty-four height.
What are the current ones now? Not that this means anything to me, but.
Uh, sixty-four by. Twenty-eight feet.
Sixty-four and three quarters by, by twenty-three feet or something along those lines, yes. Yeah, if you look at the windows, basically the window. That is not tinted out there right now is your active window, you know, so that, that size is, we're going to try and maximize that size. For you in that active area and then essentially side the spots that are, you know. So when you look at that, like, uh, in between first and second floor, you're going to have, there's a, there's a gap there. That's basically your, you know, your floor joists. And your, uh, you know, whole concrete structure and it's a lot bigger. You look, when you walk up the stairs, you'll notice that. And you'll see on there that that's sizable in between the two windows, you know?
So, so Jack.
No, go ahead.
Um, it's probably about three or four weeks ago, so I, Eric was out front and I started talking, I just, I just said, I know, Eric, I'm not going to hold this to you, but. How much of this glass do you think is going to be gone? And it was a substantial amount. So just like if we took our current glass, and I know obviously top to bottom, we have a lot of square feet of glass. And then we do the square foot of actual glass we're putting in now. I mean, we're, we're probably looking at losing seventy-five plus percent of our. I mean, if you just.
As far as active glass, yes. Yes, uh, is your active glass is not going to be that big of a loss, you know, you're, you're. What I'm saying by active glass is the one you can actually see out of. So, you know, essentially, uh. What we presented to you is to, to replace the, the spots that aren't for efficiency reasons with something that we can insulate bind, you know? With the siding stuff, so.
It just, my, my point was, and I understand that the whole point of this also is to save, save money. But you know, it is going to be substantially different, cause we are used to quite a bit of glass. And this is a big, big change. There's a lot of glass that's going to be seventy-five percent, probably at least no longer there.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, we could, we could do that math for you to figure out.
I don't think your active glass would, would be, would be less than twenty percent though. You know, the, the glass that you're looking at, you know, you're not losing much of that. If that makes, if that helps at all.
Not actual glass that people can look at it, we're not using.
You're not losing much other than just the width of what we had there in the framing area.
More of the stuff you just see from the outside.
Yes, yeah, your appearance outside is going to change.
More appearance.
We don't turn any lights off because we got more glass, more sunlight coming through. We always turn on the same amount of lights every day, don't we?
Well, no, they turn on by themselves.
Wow, okay, but I mean, I mean, we never turned off lights before. Because we had more sunshine coming through, did we?
A, a couple of offices do, but by and large, no.
My light's on.
Well, your office is dark all the time, yeah.
Cause I don't have my lights on.
Lights are on, nobody, if somebody's on.
I think the employee should have a huge, uh, input on all of this. It's their work environment.
Well, we're brightening up the lights anyway, so what we lose in sunlight will gain in brighter lights.
What timeframe, like where are you looking at this? Just so people have a general idea.
This is the front of the building.
No, I know, I said, what timeframe?
Like you said, uh, our time constraint right now is our architect. Getting the drawings done for us, you know, basically, um, I really had to lean on him hard to get himself this far. He said he is now. Now that into the, doing this, so I'm expecting within the next month to have a set of drawings for the entire outside for you guys, you know? And then from there we can, you know. Alter some things and everything like that. Like I say, the biggest things, this right here is pretty general. And this is a lot of your glass, you know, every section sixty-four inches all the way around there, so that's the biggest general part of it. Your entryways are the ones that are going to be in question to how cosmetically that lays out, and I kind of told him. Put that together, how, how you like, as far as what sightings where. To see if, just to give you guys a start, you know, does that make sense for you guys?
Anything else, Commissioner Wiltsey?
Uh, how are we looking for a front entrance in the bathroom? Do we have timeframes?
Um, bathroom, uh, we're just waiting on the, um, final set of drawings. So I can take him to, uh, the building department, so they approve my ADA. Uh, stuff and everything like that. We're, we're ready to go as far as just, once we have that, we're ready, you know? So, um, you know, like we were able to start the lighting and stuff basically, cause we didn't have to have drawings on it.
So I'm picturing the windows right up front here. In these offices, um, will the sill, the bottom sill be where it is now or? They're not moving up, so the top is coming down.
The, the top will come down, it's just, uh. You know, how significant that is, I'm not sure exactly. What do you get to see, you know, as far as the height of it, I can, we could get it exact layout, we could put a piece of tape across, you know?
Well, I gotta think this is probably a three-foot sill. Yeah, you're three foot sill, you're going to be. Be five foot above that, so. As long as we don't, uh, hire too many people over seven feet tall, we'll probably be pretty good.
What about the inside? The shade, they're going to be smaller. We ain't got as much glass.
Uh, as far as, you know, we didn't put anything in there as far as your shade, you know, changing your shade and stuff like that, believe that. What's theirs, we could still use, you know, to shade it and stuff.
Just a question.
Tim, do you have anything?
Just give me the dimensions on those windows one more time.
Fifty-eight by fifty-four.
Okay. That's what I got. Be on the inside for a finish.
Um, so the, the windows that we proposed are, uh. The exterior is that aluminum clad and the inside will be, uh, like a pre-finished white.
Um, I guess in the blocked off area.
Yep, drywall. Drywall paint, yep.
I guess that's better than OSB, I guess.
You guys will keep us updated as you come on? Okay, are you guys good with that? Thank you guys, thanks for coming.
Have a good night.
That was quick and painless. Uh, item six, discussion items. Ben Evergreen, West Branch Community Airport Manager. Come on up, sir. Nice to meet you.
Unfortunately.
I hear good things. Oh, gosh. Oh, my gosh.
Unfortunately, I've got a proposal for a budgetary appropriation adjustment.
Give it to us.
And what we're looking for, uh, the bottom line, it is eighteen thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. Additional for the airport appropriation. Um, I've got my budget discussion here that I presented to the airport board when we went through this. And I kind of experienced a couple of items that, that changed. I gave them a couple of options and we made a little bit of adjustment. And, uh. Here we sit. Over the last five years, we've had a whole lot of increases, you know, insurance costs. And some increases in. Salary, salary costs basically because I went from being a contractor to being an employee. So my, my health insurance and stuff like that. Um, through COVID, we were able to cover those costs with different COVID recovery grants. But, um, at the beginning of fiscal year twenty-five. We sat down and we all had looked through the budget, um, you know, with no more COVID funds. These were the totals that we came to. Um, through the next couple of pages, I've got pretty good explanations right through, through the whole budget and then through the whole budget process and everything.
Commissioner Scott.
Well, he sat on the airport board and have for my tenure here. We run. Pretty much, pretty, pretty lean throughout the year. Uh, we, we get, of course, the contributions between the city of West Branch and the county. Don't cover. Most of it, we get a lot of federal dollars. A lot of federal dollars and then we get some lot of state dollars to. Through the Department of Transportation. Just to give you, just to give you the thing about the, the, the new runway, the new runway was ninety percent. Federal, yeah, and only five percent here in the, in the county and five percent out of, from the state. So we had a two million dollar project out there that didn't cost us much at all. And a lot of the stuff, you know, but we uh, we, we provide services there. We've looked at different fees throughout the year, every, every year we look at them. It costs so much to land a plane and it costs so much to take off in a plane and those ramp, ramp fees and we've adjusted those. We have hangar fees and we've just those through the years too. Uh, and, and will continue to do so. So uh, I, I, like, you know, like, this is a. It's a, the airport is a heck of a service that people don't really see the uh. They don't really see it, you know, I mean, and, and this is the same problem we have with everything. It's hard to communicate to the public and. Uh, what, what the county even does for them, let alone just the airport.
They don't see that UPS jet coming in every night.
Every night and every morning.
Right.
Yeah, it comes in twice a day and it brings in, if, if anybody gets an overnight package, that's the way it gets here. Is on, on, on a, a board on airplane. And then there's a lot of other things and we've, and we've, uh, last year, last year, for one thing, we had. We had a medevac helicopter sitting there uh, every day of the all summer long. Um, ready to go out and uh. We were hoping that they would make this a permanent base for them, maybe they will. Uh, that's just up to them, but we have a terror for them, um. And I'm, I'm thinking that, that, that may happen yet in the future. If you read the, if you read the uh. Articles in the paper last week about EMS and how, how often uh, Oscoda County calls for an ambulance. Our helicopter ambulance. Uh, it's, it's a lot and, and for it to come out of West Branch rather than Saginaw, it's gonna be a, 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 a big difference. But uh, I, you know. We've just witnessed insurance costs for the county, insurance costs at the airport in the same way. And uh, as Ben outlined with uh, with costs of uh, keeping Ben. Ben's done a great job. Last, this last year was recognized by the Aviation Association. Or the state of Michigan, wasn't it?
Yeah.
State of Michigan has, has a uh. A, a, airport director. Yeah. I thought that putting him on the payroll or putting him on the county insurance, he didn't go on the county payroll. He's on the airport payroll and paid for it by the airport and so is his benefits, but. Putting him on as, as an employee at the airport and then. Providing that healthcare package and, and benefit packages is uh, is, is good. Well, he has, he has some help, full and part time, right?
Yeah, part time.
All, all part time.
Yeah, just, just in part time.
Just that, okay. And uh. Like I say, we, we, we stay right on top of it and try to save, save where we can. But it takes some money to operate. I think we've done a pretty good job out there. That's it.
Commissioner, what's he?
I'm a big, big fan of our airport. Last couple of years, I got to know Ben and the services out there and. We have a number of our meetings there and we have an absolutely beautiful airport, which we're very proud of it. I know Commissioner Scott touched base on, you know, other forms of, of revenue makers from the airport. Is there any other things we can look at or chase after then try to be able to generate more revenue out there?
The one that we've been working on the last few years is um, developing some of our property into farmland. So we can get some farm lease on it. We've got about ninety five acres into tillable farmland now that we've got a, a little bit of a lease on it. We'll get more in the future. I'm pretty well chasing down the normal fee structures that we can. We've got ramp fees on jet and turbine powered aircraft. You know, we sell jet fuel and we sell hundred dollar lead. We, we're pretty competitive on our hangar rates. You know, you can always raise your hangar rates and generate a little bit more, but then you might lose tenants. But as far as other normal, normal items that airports generate revenue from, kinda, kinda developing some of our. Not surplus property, but some of the property they need all those protections to the runway approaches and the farmland has been kind of a creative way to. Generate a little more revenue. Yeah, if you go to page, what would be page three in your, your things, what, what Scott was saying to begin with the. Out of the five hundred and eighty nine thousand dollar budget for the year, two hundred and ninety five of that is federal and state grants.
It does seem like every meeting you're always coming to us with a new grant or something.
Yeah.
He's, he, he does go after.
We chase down. We don't win everyone.
And also every meeting, we have discussion about. Revenue and things like fuel sales.
Yep.
Ben took a one out and said, you know, did a kind of a comparison of well, other, with other airports to see what they were charging for fuel and I mean. You know, so he's right on top of all of that stuff, ramp fees, everything. We have that discussion every month at those board meetings, so.
I mean, according to this proposed twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget, I, I mean. The expenditures or, or the revenues meet the expenditures. It just sounds like it's gonna be a tough, a tight. Am I looking at this correctly? I guess it's that.
Correct, yeah, it's a, it's a balanced proposed budget.
It's gonna be a hundred percent. I mean, it, you're gonna run a tight year, but you got it.
Yep.
Correct?
Yep.
Well, this. That's at eighty four, six, seventy eight, fifty five. That includes the eighteen, six, seventy nine extra. That was the number that we, that we came to that we would need. Yeah.
So you need.
So there was, there was only sixty six thousand approved in the.
I see.
Budget for, so yeah, that's the difference that we're looking.
So I guess you guys have thoughts on that. And where would it come from?
Well, we're gonna do the quarterly adjustments um. Yep, this month, depending. Next Thursday's meeting and, and how much you wanna stand for it, but. Um, the first place I would always go for something like this when we're doing those quarterly adjustments is look what other areas. Where our expenditures aren't running where we thought they would. In other words, we're not gonna spend as much. Then it would be just a matter of moving from whatever those activities were to this airport allocation line uh, in our um. Appropriations uh, activity, uh, and that's where I'd like to go first. While it's an increase for this budget. It may not be an increase in expenditures for our general fund. So that, that work will be done. Otherwise, I do know, as, as the board knows from what we saw in the last quarterly adjustment. The marijuana revenue was way over what we projected, way more than this, so it's. That revenue will be there to do that, but I'd rather do it by cutting the expense first and then whatever else we may need. We, we will go to something like that.
Yeah, if we use the marijuana money, it fits with the airport, fine, get, I would get higher.
Yeah, but we also gotta remember that five hundred thousand dollars is not gonna.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Uh, but our federal and state grants, obviously clearly by far our largest revenue for the airport. What, what has that number gone down from last year?
No, no, that has not. No, that has held steady.
Okay, cause I know the public, the chairman of the um, common transit service, you know, our state and federal. Funds are continuing to decrease, but you're not seeing a decrease over the last number of years.
No, over the last two years, they've, they've been steady. This includes about a hundred and forty five thousand dollars of bipartisan infrastructure law money. That we, we've received for two years and we're gonna receive it for three more, so we'll receive it through twenty twenty seven. And then that money will fall off, but no, this has been steady for two years and expected to be for the three more.
Good to hear.
Yeah, that's good.
Anything else, guys? Tim, you'll let us know on this.
Right, and I mean. Appreciate, we normally would bring it to committee the whole first, but I could probably bring the entire second quarter adjustment to the meeting next Thursday. If you wanna do it that way, otherwise we wait for the next meeting, which is no hurry on it. I don't wanna rush you. At the same point, it is the halfway mark on the budget year. It'd be great to have that under our belt.
I remember, there's, there's no urgency with this decision, correct?
Well, the, the only urgency is um, we're, we're halfway through that.
Right.
Five fiscal cycle, so April first was when we invoice for the second half of that, so. I mean, we're waiting on that.
Ready for Thursday, no question. This, this component of it, if you're willing to do this and be ready for Thursday, no question. Uh, and at that point, I can show you whatever movement we need to make, uh, to make it happen.
Yeah, I wanna see where it's gonna come from. I mean. Anything else, guys? Okay, thank you, sir.
Can I have your ear for about ten more seconds?
Give me what?
Have your ear for about. So you, you mentioned the marijuana money. Actually, one of the companies that owns a big grow operation, yours, east of here flies in and out quite frequently. So they, they bring, they buy jet fuel and they, they come through. If you go to your, your second little packet from the back. It is a community benefit analysis or Michigan Airport Economic Benefit Analysis that the state of Michigan puts out. And a green color.
Oh, yes. Seen it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Anyways, um, this one would, we calculated last year off of twenty twenty three numbers. But this calculates how many jobs are affected by the airport and what the um, impact is to the community. If you go to that second page, they show a hundred and sixty one jobs with a direct effect from the airport. And about six point seven million dollars worth of, of wage, you know, la- labor. Revenue into the community from that. Those hundred and sixty one jobs are based on. Um, the number at UPS, because we've got a UPS terminal here that does cards going in and out and on Taylor Door. The manufacturer, when Taylor Door sold a few years back. They, they were at some of our airport meetings and they fly in and out quite frequently managing things. And they, they told us at that time that if we didn't have a convenient airport to go in and out, they would have consolidated our product line. With one in South Carolina and we just would have lost those seventy or eighty jobs that are there. So that's, that's just a little economic benefit.
Absolutely.
That the state gives us.
That's, that's a good point, Ben. Just for like an example that too, that I found out a lot through. Just different aspects of the business that it brings to Homer County. We have a couple outfitters.
Yep.
And these people fly from all over the United States and into West Branch. Hunt within the county and you know that they're spending money, you know, obviously at, at those places that, you know, our cars and our restaurants, so. There's a lot of different aspects of.
And not really pushing for this, but I just don't get in front of you guys. Saw that often, so I just wanted to talk that.
Oh, I appreciate that.
The very last sheet. For our flying. Um, that's always a lot of fun. All of our public events don't come out of our airport budget. They don't come out of tax money. They're all put on by a pilot's association that raises funds separately, so. We get some people that are like, why are you doing this with my tax dollars? We're not doing that with your tax dollars. But it is a lot of fun to have the pilots association do events because it brings people out, lets them see what the airport.
Absolutely.
So.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Will you have me copies for tomorrow so I can?
Yes, I will.
Thank you, see you tomorrow.
Hey, hey, Ben, do you have electronic? We can use it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Item sixty, at will employee lump sum payment.
Right, um. We got word on Monday officially that the steel workers have ratified their contracts. Which brings the last group of employees, particularly in this bu- building. Uh, where the contracts allowed for the seven hundred and fifty dollar lump sum payment uh, to the employees not added to the base. Um, it would now be appropriate to talk about the at will employees who aren't uh, part of the bargaining units. And suggesting that uh, we do the same there. And in this case, I'm just gonna suggest it be across the board, at will employees and our elected officials uh, as department heads. The key difference though in that group is, as you know, if you, there's an increase in a, an elected official's uh, compensation. At any point during the term, that cannot be decreased as opposed to our at will employees. This is a one time lump sum, not added to the base. That being said, I'm pretty confident when we uh, put together the fiscal year twenty sixth budget. That we'll be looking at adjustments in wages again. And so we do the arithmetic at that point and make sure that everything's equal, if you will. So uh, with our elected officials, they would continue to receive that seven fifty for each of the next. Three years uh, in, in the term, uh, so that when we do our uh, compensation adjustments. We make sure we take that into account. That is added to their base, so we just remember that. But I'm bringing that uh, to you uh, tonight, just to um, bring the, bring us full circle on our employees.
Comments, Commissioner Sorok.
So everybody has ratified except for the shareholders, command and corrections.
And command is based on a ratio.
Right.
For what the deputies earned, so they kinda technically got it already as well. Corrections is left.
We're gonna get this money from Tim.
No, we're gonna use the, in this case, it's gonna end up being the interest out of our RBA dollars.
Is there enough there to cover it off?
Pretty confident there will be. Um, we did not factor in interest in any of the projects. We spent our four point one million, whatever it was, uh, so theoretically it'll all still be there.
What's our fund balance gonna be?
So for the end of this year. I am really going out on a limb, giving you a number. We should be in the million dollar neighborhood.
Two twenty thousand ain't gonna kill us.
No, barring anything drastic that there's no way we could have ever thought of, we should be around there.
It's tough to give twenty thousand when we just told everybody here we're broke. It's tough.
So I guess the first, and I apologize, I'm on negotiations and the, I never have been, so I know, I don't. I only know stuff about the union when you bring it to us. So the first union, which was who the first?
Still workers.
Still workers.
They did not get, what did they? No, it was still workers, I think. Didn't. Who settled first? Did, because they did not get raises and they didn't get the seven fifty lump sum, correct?
They get the seven fifty.
They did. I was thinking they didn't. Okay.
Transit guys didn't.
Additional right to their base.
Commissioner Scott.
Well. You bring up a good point, but. Negotiations, it's not just one sided. We don't just give and they take, it's back and forth. Whether or not one wants something or they don't want something, it goes back and forth and it's, it's very difficult because there's. Five different contracts and, and, and.
I agree.
Makes it very difficult and you're talking all different times, but. At will employees, we have a number of at will employees and then five elected positions. That will, you know, I mean, I've always had the right to date one, I, I would pay at will even more money. But uh, I, I, I think this is, I think this is fair to our at wills. Uh, I think this is very fair and uh. Yes, we conveyed out to everybody our financial condition. We had to do that at the beginning of any negotiations. I mean, we had to lay it right out there and we weren't fictitious about it all. It was fact and we could prove it. We, we've always held off in the three negotiations I've been involved with, we've always held off to the end. Of the union negotiation before we address that will. And um, it's been quite a while since we even attacked the elected officials' base pay. And I think I've only done that once in my time. And I think I've only done that once in my time here as far as the elected.
I think we've done twice since I've been here.
Twice on the.
Which isn't much. I think so, yeah.
Okay, might have been. Might have been. But uh, um, I think this is more than fair. That will, they don't, there's no organization that, of that will. They cannot, they do not come to us. United and with commands. The others do. Part of negotiation is here to hear demands from a group. You know. So I think it's fair.
Commissioner.
Yeah, our, our, our at-will employees deserve this. You know, we've been working really, really hard on that budget committee, you know, the majority of our political leaders slash at-will employees. Working very, very hard to see this work for this county, to get this financial condition going the right way, which we are. Um, so I think they definitely deserve that. And, and here in Tim, we know he, he throws out that one million dollar mark. I think this next six months, we need to. Continue to work very, very hard, be consistent, keep everybody accountable. So we can hit that one million dollar mark because I think it's attainable. Uh, but we just have to keep every day, we have to keep working hard. And stay core.
I, I, oh, did you have something?
The only other thing, I, I want to amplify what. What Charlie just said. A lot of these at-will positions are department heads. Randy Booth that was sat right in front of us, he's an at-will department head. He is the guy that's pushing. This cost savings policy through his department. You know, we're not just talking to somebody that's just an employee. He is a, a director of, of other people to keep that cost savings down. So um, I mean, a, a, and there's a number of those, well, Ben, well, not Ben so much as, as uh, Tony over in transit and. And, and other positions. And they're, they're the ones driving our policy to save money.
And if I can add to what Commissioner Wilson says, well, I sit on budget as well. They are at the table and they are active and they are working their high and downs off. And I think they deserve recognition and. The form of this compensation, you know, they have helped us save. It's not like we're just handing them money. They have worked for it and they deserve it, in my opinion.
I'm going to agree with that in the aspect there. They're typically the ones we don't hear from. Um, I think they're behind the scenes and I, I think they all do a very good job at what they've done and continue to do. My only one that I'm here that I, I, I am a little uncomfortable with is the animal control officer who just started like. Last week, like.
So to address that, and we could write up the resolution that states, uh, you know, anybody in the employee of the county as of insert date. So if you want to say January one, would be eligible. Anybody hired after January one would not be.
I mean, I, it's just because like literally he's all these other, at least I don't have a problem with any jail administrator. We don't have one.
Right.
Um, I mean, the rest of my, I agree a hundred percent. I, I, as long as we got the funds, we know where it's coming from. I, I. Hundred percent in favor of this. The only, my issue would be the, the, the gentleman who ju- just started that position, brand new next year. Would I have an issue with that if we're in a good financial? Absolutely not. But this year, he's. He's uh, brand new, so.
And keep in mind too, you did increase the wage for that position as well. Makes perfect sense.
Substantially. I don't know how you guys feel about that, but that's. Uh, foreclosed property purchase option.
Um, I sent a list to Tim. I foreclosed on. Or more than last year. Last year we foreclosed on twenty-nine. Um, the Act of Right of First Reuse comes in the order of the state of Michigan. They count me, the townships, and then the land bank. So I just sent out to all of those entities asking for interest in right review zone. If there's any properties you'd like to take, now is the time to ask for that. Um, if you so choose not to, I just need a waiver saying that you have no interest.
I don't think we want more.
I didn't go out to find the properties or anything. Yeah, yeah, I don't see why we want one anymore. There's a couple of spots I'd like to get rid of. Point of Hill Park for one of them, other than to keep the tower location, but. I just, I'm tired of maintaining that thing because it does nothing for us. And I don't see why we'd want to take on anymore. This will come up next year and every other year after that, if there's. If there's some, for some reason, we need a piece of property someplace and it. I mean, we've got property right around the corner and we're not even using it, but we're mowing it.
Hey, I'm always fascinated by this last couple of years and I look at this closely. I mean, if we were in a very positive financial position, I'd be really probably more. Keen at looking at more of these individual where we could possibly work with our land bank and work with the developer and generate some money for the county.
But we do have one that we're hoping.
Right, right. But, but what I'm saying is if financially we were in a better position to do that, I mean, I think it'd be a good opportunity to try to generate some money. We know as a county, we can only generate so much money, but we're just not there yet, so.
I looked at it and I, there wasn't anything that I thought we should be jumping on, so.
I agree. And nothing else on that, right, Tim?
Right, so um, that gives us the answer. We can complete that.
Draft fiscal year twenty-twenty's budget calendar.
Yeah, this probably looks very familiar to a few of you, uh, a list of uh, deadlines and dates for meetings uh, associated with fiscal year twenty-six budget. Can believe they're starting this already. Um, two dates, uh, in particular to note, first one, June twenty-seventh, that would be the date that department heads and all of our budget administrators are to submit their requested budgets. I would then have a proposed budget to you by the committee of the whole meeting on July seventeenth. Uh, and then we're off and running. Now, I want to point out, and I mentioned this department heads and I said it at the budget committee meeting as well. They don't anticipate a lot of great angst this year, uh, as compared to the last couple of years. And that, um, even looking at this calendar, it's very conceivable by the first part of August, you're pretty well ready to go. Uh, we do have the budget hearing scheduled on this calendar on September uh, uh, eighteenth. But there's no reason why, I'm sorry, September eleventh. Uh, there's no reason why we can't have that earlier if you're ready. So just keep that in mind. And this is, this can be very fluid. And we can adjust it as, as needed going forward. Um, but I'm, I'm kind of looking forward to having a year where it's not as intense as it's been the last couple of years. Uh, and of course, I don't want to cut short the time either. If you need the time, it's there. But uh, the only uh, goal that we can't remove is having this adopted by September thirtieth because the fiscal year starts on October first.
Thank you. And there's anything to discuss there. Professional municipal clerks week declaration.
You've got a proposal there that was submitted by the clerk and I'll let you take it from there, but this is something that a number of counties have done. It's a resolution that's taken mostly from another county, not dropped out by us.
Clerk? Yeah, so um, over the past few years, the. Township clerks' responsibilities, um, they've increased. They. What's expected out of them has really increased and I feel like I would like to just show. My appreciation for them. Um, I know you, you guys deal with them, all being commissioners. Um. They're one of the go-to people for the townships. Um, actually got this idea from Russ Common. Um, they're doing, they're doing the same thing. They've done it for. Want to say it was thirty-four years, it's not that, I can't remember. Um, but I just felt like. My clerks need to be recognized for all of their hard work and um. This resolution will do that. So it basically is just honoring them, um, making it the professional municipal clerks week, May fourth through the tenth. Which is the election week, which kind of is perfect for us clerks.
Comments, Commissioner Sorok?
One hundred percent in favor of this. They do work extremely hard and it's God knows. As being a deputy clerk, yeah, but you know, especially last year with the elections. Thank God we're going to be. Relatively smooth this year, but, and it has, there's been. I don't know why I haven't been in the right mind, I don't want to be a township clerk.
Commissioner Sorok or Scott, geez.
Just common junior, I guess.
No, no, yeah, I, you know, I don't, I, I, I'm surprised that we don't even have uh, uh, township board week. You know, really, because there's so many, so much, uh. Uh, they, they do, you know, but yes, absolutely. I don't have a problem with this at all.
Commissioner, we'll see.
Um, I only have one township, but I know I've traveled the county quite well and gone to most of the townships and some of them a number of times. And we have a lot of hard-working township, so, I think this is great.
Yeah, I think I brought up the point of as far as townships, um. All the township boards and this year, a lot of boards uh, got new board members and I think clerks specifically. Um, some of them were definitely unaware of how much work uh, goes into that. So they really uh. Have had a pretty uh, eye-opening experience and have made leaps and bounds and continue to make leaps and bounds. But I think all of our township. Boards deserve recognition. It's a very thankless job as, very similar to our job. Um, you know, typically when you see the public at those township board meetings, typically it is uh, for something negative. Very, very seldom do you see uh, much positive going on. So it's, it's. I think the entire township boards as a whole, um, deserve recognition. But yeah, I think that this is a good thing, so. Okay, Commissioner comments. Commissioner Scott.
Well, I think, I think we've covered a lot of stuff tonight, um. Uh, as far as the, my biggest thing is this draft budget calendar. This has really worked out the last few years, having a budget calendar. To play into this budget calendar then is, is the. Once again, another round of, of employee of, of union talks. And I have to play into next year's budget big time. Um, so we'll have to correlate the two in order to come up with the right numbers. But uh, well, from what I'm hearing about this, this budget committee and how it's been working out really good. The buy-in, the buy-in we're getting from all across the. The realms, not, not from the department heads and the, the elected officials, you know, for the majority of it. It's just been huge and, and we're seeing the outcome. We're seeing the result. It's really working. Um, that's, it's, I hate to say that people are going to pay more taxes because what Randy was telling us in his report. But it's only going to help the operation of the county in the long run. And then the, the. Bethany there from Manor Cost, remember we've gone leaps and bounds. I wish that we could get. I wish the media was strong enough here in the county that, to be able to push this out. This is another one of these things. That we've taken over the years to change the way we did business and it's working. Uh, and we got some steps to take. Insurance. Yeah, we've bid it out before. We've gotten letters where they don't even want to bid us. Uh, we see where those things are. I, I'd like to, I'd like to address those things. On a more individual basis. I think, I think commissioners need to know more about some of the liabilities. That's occurred. I was looking at some of those lists and I don't remember a couple of lawsuits that were listed there. I don't remember hearing about them. And I think I'd, I should hear about them. These uh, twenty-five, I thought like a lawsuit was five thousand dollar deductible, but I see now. Twenty-five thousand dollars. You know, when we got people just think that they could shoot their mouth off at somebody and that not get sued. Well, when we do get sued, it's twenty-five thousand right off the top, right off the top, before we even talk about what the heck happened. Soon as they file that suit against us, twenty-five grand right out the door, you know. Plus, plus the attorneys, you know, so. No, I think tonight's meeting is uh. A lot of information here, a lot of information, so.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yeah, good meeting tonight, a lot of really good information. Um, you know, we're heading in the right direction. I'm here Commissioner Scott, I'm really concerned and frustrated with the fact. I also read some things in there that I had no idea about. I mean, I feel if there's something like that going on, we should be. Just about the first person to be notified about that. So I think uh, I'm going to look into that a little bit more and find out. Why that's not the case and, you know, hopefully moving forward, we have less and less of those, but if we are getting sued by someone. Maybe the commissioners should know about it.
I can tell you right now, you are aware. I've been made aware of every suit that we have active and every suit since I've been here. But keep in mind that that list that you saw was back to twenty-twenty.
It does.
And there are some, or still some outstanding suits prior to that that I see pop up that they still have open. I have no idea what they're for. But their past years, they were never closed. They weren't able to find somebody or whatever it might be. So they leave it open just, just in case somebody comes back. But I, I can guarantee you, you've been informed of every active suit since I've been here.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything worse. I had an individual telling me something that took place that was pretty significant. A community member telling me something that had happened a week previous that I had no, no idea. Um, and now we are involved in the lawsuit of this, but I had called Tim shortly thereafter and said, hey, is this true? And. You know, that's pretty sad. A community member um, was telling me of an event that we had no clue of. So I think it does come down to, to simple communication and it's nice to not be caught off guard when we go to the townships and we're out in public settings and. Um, again, as we are all aware, that information is, is confidential until it is shared with the public, but it is nice to know things. I know this meeting went very well. Yeah, deep old insurance, but I think you have a good rapport with them. I, I, I mean, when we ask questions, they show up. Um, they, they're local, uh. I mean, they're good for you. You guys work with them. They're good for you guys to work with. I believe from everything that you have reported.
You can't get much more local and across the street.
Well, I think that that's important, but again, the communication.
I have to say though, they've, they've been um, very responsive. On everything that's come up. In fact, um, anytime there is any kind of like even a slip and fall, we have a. System where that's reported to me within twenty-four hours and they're notified immediately, uh, just in case we ever need to open a case. Uh, and this comes again from that kind of rapport. Uh, they are um, probably waiting on me more than I wait on them. I have to say that.
And my, my other request is with this, this report that we did get from Manor. Here is just again, keeping us updated on these changes that they recommended or for internal controls, just things that, that are taking place. Little tidbits along the way, I guess. Commissioner, any, anything? Any comments? Commissioner Sorok.
Just if, if you look at that, the dates are on there. The vast majority of the, the big ticket items are from like four years ago and. Prior.
There's still some big ticket pending.
No, there's only a couple pending, but. Great information. I mean, this is, you know, it, it's nice to be able to historically go back and look at. You know, history teaches us a lot and we can look at any of these reports and we can look, you know, manners, all, see where we were. We know where we were at basically, and I think Mr. Scott said forty-two different ways of doing things and forty-two, you know. We're getting there. We're making the headway. So, and you know, I, I love this kind of stuff to be able to know. Where, what direction we're headed in and knowing number one, this is the right direction and that we've made a lot of progress in a relatively short period of time. Since this has been implemented, so.
No such thing as perfection.
Exactly. We can always do better and like to move forward. That's the important thing. We're not moving backwards.
Um, yeah, I think it's great, local, local company, but obviously we saw a premium. That's a lot of money, a lot, a lot of money. Now, I remember that first year that I was here, um, I think Tim had mentioned. That it's hard for us to really even go out there and to look for other people because of the financial position of the county. Obviously now the financial position of the county is better. We're heading in the direction to continue to make it better. So I would think that, you know, we should be a little more. So I would think that, you know, we should be a little more. App to somebody wanting to, you know, give us some good, strong numbers because of our financial position.
So just sort of giving you an idea, we still have a ways to go. Uh, with a group like MMRMA who ensures most of the counties in the state. Uh, they would require us to have a retention fund and that retention fund for a county like ours, probably a million and a half. That's how far away we are from being able to do something like that, but it's something to work for. It'll take some years, but yeah, something to work for.
And maybe even um claims will. Decrease with the changes that have happened this past year. I understand what you're saying and I I I shop around for vehicle insurance at least. Once a year. I mean, obviously you 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 do due diligence and I I hear you a hundred percent, but I was here with Commissioner Scott, I don't know, two years ago. When literally we got refusal letters from two different people and I agree, we are headed in the right direction with these changes of that have occurred recently. Maybe there'll be less claims and that continues to improve our status, but. Public comment, sir.
I I agree with you, Don. You don't get credit for a lot of your efforts down there. The public doesn't know a lot of what's. What goes on, but um this this citizen's confident that uh we're in good hands.
Well, thank you. That's nice to hear.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that. Thank you for you do.
Any public comment on the phone? We have a previous commissioner looking upon us. Do you have any comments, sir? Do you miss this chair? Motion to adjourn. We are adjourned, guys. Thanks for the meeting.